Half ready? All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call to order this Curville City Council meeting for November 18th, 2025. Please rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance led by Councilmember Jeff Harris.
You would please bow your heads with me. Heavenly Father, we come before you with humble and grateful hearts as we gather for this evening for this Curville City Council meeting. We thank you for the gift of the community, for the blessings you've poured over our city, and for the opportunity to serve one another with wisdom and integrity. Lord, we lift up our leaders tonight, grant us clarity of mind, unity of purpose, and the courage to make decisions that honor truth, compassion, and justice. Guide every discussion, every plan, and every action, so that the work done here brings peace, prosperity, and well-being to all who call Curville home. We offer our deepest gratitude for the brave men and women who serve as our first responders, our police, fire, EMS, and all who run toward danger, so that others may be kept safe. Protect them, strengthen them, and bless them and their families with comfort and peace. We also thank you for the members of our military, past and present, whose sacrifices ensure our freedoms we cherish. May your hand of protection be placed upon them wherever they are throughout the world. As we approach Thanksgiving, please help us to remember the true spirit of gratitude. Keep our hearts tender, our minds focused on what is good, and our homes filled with peace and happiness. May our community be marked not by division, but by grace, generosity, and understanding. Lord, we ask for your peace, peace in our city, peace in our homes, and peace in our hearts. Heal what is broken, restore what has been lost, and let your presence be felt in every corner of Curville. We place this meeting in of our city into your loving hands, in your holy and heavenly name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Crystal, are you up? Announcements of community interests.
Good evening, City Council members. Good evening, community members. As you can see, I am not Stewart Cunias. My name is Crystal Stutes. I'm the new communications director for the City of Curville, and I'm honored to be part of the City of Curville team. I do not have a presentation for you all tonight. I am in my third week on the job, and I am learning as we go. I just wanted to do a kind of a brief introduction of who I am, and also I can list off a few of the things that we have going on in the coming weeks. So, really quickly, I'm from the Hill Country, born and raised. Went to college and grad school at UT Austin and at Middlebury College, where I studied Russian language, which was very useful here. And after that, I went to work at a PR agency, spent some time in Dallas, then came back home to the San Antonio area to work at USAA. I was there for about eight years and really enjoyed my time working in a variety of roles. And I'm very glad that it's prepared me to be here today to serve the City of Curville and this community. I'm excited to tell you that we have several great events coming up. This coming weekend, we have the tree lighting, as well as the holiday lighted parade that kicks off at 6:00 PM. Additionally, in the county, there is a red oak tree planting that will be taking place at 4:00 PM. On December 6th, we have two great events coming up. Running Home for the Holidays 5K through our Parks and Rec team. And then we have Christmas Cookies with the Cops at Arcadia on December 6th. I believe Santa may make an appearance. That's pretty much it for now. If anyone has any questions for me, I am located right over there, and we'll be happy to have you come visit in the Public Information Office. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome aboard. Anybody have announcements?
Well, I just want to say thank you, a big thank you to the city and to the attendees and those that were involved in the Water Street Festival that just occurred. It was a phenomenal success in so many ways. We had families and kids, and the businesses downtown said they had their record day that day. So it says to us that we need to do it again, so we're looking at October 24th of '26. But thank you if you participated in any way. I appreciate your help, and it was a booming success. Thank you.
Congratulations.
I have one. It's a fund deal. It's the second annual, and it benefits Blue Santa. So on the 14th of December, it's a Sunday at 12 o'clock, River Hill Country Club will host the second annual Blue Santa Golf Tournament. It's $100 per player, and 100% of the proceeds goes back to the Curville Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association. Did I get that right, Brenda?
Did.
Thank you. But it will be out there. They're gonna have a raffle. It'll be a 50-50, so half the proceeds of the raffle will go to the winner, and the other half will go back to the Blue Santa program as well. So please, if you're willing and able, I'm looking at George Eitner out here, because I know he's a golfer too, but if you're willing and able to want to come out and play and support and give to a great cause so the children in our community that are less fortunate can have a great Christmas, it's a great way to do so.
So I would just like to thank the Habitat and the Ford Philanthropy, I guess. It sponsored a golf tournament for the first responders. Jeff Harris put together the winning team, put us all to shame.
That was the board member that put the team together, not me.
Well, you, anyway, you guys played very well. So anyways, a big thanks to Habitat and the Ford Philanthropy Foundation. Also, this last weekend, the UGRAs and the city co-sponsored the cleanup of the river, and there were 184, I guess, if I read the paper. I think up to 200 people showed up. And of course, we always appreciate that, but it was a little extra special this time because it gets to count toward our matching funds for some of the projects that are coming up. So thanks to everybody that was out helping clean up.
Curville Pets Alive had a clinic come in today, and they spay neutered 40 pets for people, so be looking for dates for next year. We'll probably have at least three clinics again next year.
Now, former Mayor Eitner is in the audience. We're gonna have the financial report at the beginning of the meeting instead of the ending of the meeting. Experiment.
He's telling if everybody stays.
Well, I hope it goes well. So, good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. So we're gonna be providing you a estimate of the fiscal year '25 end. It's October. Not a lot going on yet to report out, so we're gonna kind of give you what we think is the final numbers, close to anyways, for fiscal year '25. There may be some small immaterial changes, but that'll come with act for when we report that out. All right, so jumping right into the general fund and its revenues. For fiscal year '25, property tax came in at $59,000 less than we budgeted it for, and we believe that is in a shortfall in the prior year taxes. So during COVID and those times, we seen a lot of revenues come in for past due delinquent stuff because homes were selling, the market was moving, but it has slowed down now, so some of those back taxes haven't been collected. Or we just had a bad guest estimate. We don't know. But that did pretty good. Sales tax came in $147,000 better than budget. And we did just receive October and November payments the last two months, and those were actually for August and September sales in the community, and those performed well. We had 11% up in October and then 6% up in November, so that helped us push us over our budget estimate there. Right now, your current rolling 12-month average is about 4.2% over last year. So we hope those trends keep on staying positive. Down to your service revenues, that came in $132,000 better than budget, and that's mostly driven by, we believe, the solid waste surcharge. So back in July, when we had started making dump runs for all the debris removal, we did see a very large uptick the last two months in the landfill surcharge. So that helped, as well as EMS revenues. Now, recreation revenues did suffer a little bit, $285,000 behind budget. KSP obviously went down after the flood, and then golf obviously had a late start, so we hope to do better this year coming up. Down to the expenditure section, so overall, $1.4 million better than budget, but that does include a lot of the flood-related expenses for overtime and those emergency little repairs we had to make to get everything up and running immediately. But looks like we still had some savings in personnel, even though we had overtime, and then you'll see the flood expenses in that other expense line item there. So doing pretty good. Onto this next slide here are, it's just a graphical representation of your general fund revenues and expenses. So the chart over to the left shows your top three revenues, which is your property tax, your sales tax, and obviously the service revenues. And then to the right chart is your largest expense. It's going to be personnel for the general fund, one offense. Here, Julie shows you this a lot, but this is going to be your sales tax revenue trends. And most months, the shifts are pretty consistent, the trends that we see. But that helps us determine the performance of if we take the rolling 12-month average, that 4.2% we see, because every now and then you'll have some one-off months, like in February, you'll see on that bottom chart, February had an uptick. We had a $215,000 audit payment that came in. So if we keep using those same anomalies, it's gonna throw us off on our projections. So we have to be mindful of that when we start budgeting for next year to take out these higher payments that came in that are one-off. Here is previously stated, in October and November, those were better than expected, and that's gonna keep us going with all the flood recovery efforts and sales tax. Moving on to the water fund, so water fund is a different story. Not too bad, but water sales did come in behind budget, and we worked really hard on our water model for fiscal year '25. But due to the flood and the prolonged water restrictions we had, we seen a little bit of drop there, as well as we had a little bit of heavier rain or windfall in July, so. That's definitely gonna affect those water sales. Sewer, however, did perform right on budget, and we're happy with that. So overall, the fund revenues are better than budget and what we expected. The expenses, $183,000 better than budget, same story. We had a lot of flood expenditures, overtime, and emergency repairs we had to make, but still came in better than what expected. We did have to delay some operational things, or priorities kind of shifted temporarily just to mitigate what we were in the moment we were in, so we had some savings. Another graphical representation here for the water and sewer fund. So your water and your sewer fees are your largest two revenues in this fund, obviously. On the left chart, you can see the million-dollar miss in fiscal year '24 in the water sales. And again, we were working hard for this '25 model to work, just a lot of moving parts, a lot of unknowns, and obviously weather dependency is gonna change the consumption for us. Sewer, on the other hand, is more dependable. We do the residential sewer averaging, so that is pretty consistent, and we can most times count on that. Again, we try to hone in on the base charges when we do set the rates because of these volatile variables we deal with in the water fund, the consumption and the weather. All right, moving on to development services. Revenues here are very hard to predict and budget for also. And as you can see, if you look to the right of this chart, fiscal year '24 was $841,000 earned in revenue, but then here in fiscal year '25, we hit $1.2 million, so $400,000 difference. How can you expect that? But depends on development and construction or rehab that's going on, so you have a lot going on. You're gonna have more revenues, but just depends. Down to your expenditure section, personnel missed by about $25,000. However, it's the overall ending number is less than fiscal year '24, and that's because we did cut a staff personnel out of that department. However, in fiscal year '26, we're picking back up a new code enforcement officer to help with all the capacity issues we're having. Overall, the funds have a positive change in that position of $63,000, or 63,000. And we are going to leave that in fund balance so that they can have a cushion to start up the next year, just not knowing how it's gonna swing. All right, Julie implemented this the last several months for y'all, just to keep you on track of where we're at with FEMA and TIDOM and what we're going through. So these two flow charts here, the left one shows the response activities of how it takes place. So basically, when we were responding to the weather situation, we were able to put in STAR requests. If there was something immediate, we needed to keep operations happening, such as standing up the EOC or the debris removal, they took care of that, paid for that, and got it covered. Now, over to the right, we're in the recovery phase, and we're hot and heavy in that. All departments have been hands-on. They've contributed to determining all the damages and getting quotes, cost estimates, all, everything, what it would cost to put everything to pre-existing conditions. We've turned all that stuff in. FEMA reviewed all the projects. They set up official projects, assigned them ID numbers. And then now we're back at trying to get final numbers, so they get one more approval, so they can obligate the funds to TIDOM. Now, once it gets to TIDOM, we're doing all the legwork, getting the projects completed, and at this moment in time, we'll be fronting all the funds. Now, they have a threshold which determines a large project or a small project, and that threshold is, I believe, $1,020,000. So a small project, we would have to finish the project before we can ask for reimbursement. But if it's over the $1,020,000 threshold, then we can incrementally ask for reimbursements on the funds we've spent to put everything back to pre-existing conditions. So I kind of just want to give you an overview on that. This next slide here, right now, we have two, three approved projects in FEMA's queue that they are going to obligate funds for, which is our category B, which is emergency protective measures, and it covers the overtime and all the emergencies, small repairs we had to do, whether it was electrical on the lift stations or small little things like that. It was a total of $951,000 we turned in, and if all goes well, 75% reimbursement would be $700,000 back on that. We'll be working the next several months to get those documents turned in, payroll reports and all that, to get that reimbursement going. The Bear Creek Bridge came to you last meeting, I believe, and the temporary one. That was approved through FEMA's queue. They're going to obligate those funds, and we'll begin getting that set up so that we can start moving on that anticipated reimbursement of $300,000. And then Bear Creek Bridge, we have to definitely go through design before we could determine how much that's gonna cost to get that solidified with FEMA for their final review. And then projects still out there that are pending, that are not completely obligated or finalized in the FEMA path. Mainly, all the parks, it's gonna be a little bit of time. There's a lot of moving parts to that. There's environmental reviews we have to do, any ground preservation. There's a lot of steps and requirements that must be done before we completely start work on those areas. But it's positive outlook. And then Public Works, they are moving quite along quickly, not as detailed as all the parks and all the pieces they have. All in all, FEMA's moving. We've been meeting with them weekly. Right now, we're on a two-week break because they need a break, and we'll get back to it in December. But that's for a wrap. And then here is your schedule of activities that have been happening and are coming up. So we are currently on year-end close. Our audit starts in December. Working through FEMA and TIDOM stuff, December, we will file our budget award, and that is the 2026 book. Looking for all those GFOA standards, meeting all those determinations. And then January, we plan on completing audit and working up our annual financial comprehensive report. And looks like we may be doing a budget amendment in '26 for any surplus we had here in '25. All right, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Ms. Rodriguez? I like it at the beginning. It's, we're more awake.
It's better. Brenda, do we have any kind of idea of the overall dollar amount that we're looking at for flood-related repairs?
I don't. It's in the millions. I mean, I really don't. We're still waiting on the cost estimates for solid ones to come back, but I mean, with the parks up in the air and what path we're gonna take, you know, some of the numbers we had are old. I mean, what's insured at a value of 15 years ago is not the same value today, so it's, we're taking it in baby steps, I guess.
Thank you. Thank you to you. Visitor Citizens Forum. Do you have anybody signed up to speak?
Yes, sir. We have four. LaMonica Lacy.
Ms. Lacy? That'd be great.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Mayor, City Councilmen, and all of you. My name is LaMonica. I'm with the Small Business Administration. I am a public affairs specialist. I'm here with my team lead, Gabe, just to present some updates to what's going on with SBA. So for those of you who don't know, we offer low-interest rate loans to everyone. Businesses, homeowners, nonprofits, and renters at a low interest rate. Currently, what's going on is effective November the 19th, our BRC will be closing. So any in-person activity, if a person wants to register and they want to see a customer service rep at close of business on the 19th, they would need to get in and register. In addition to that, we're in the grace period, so we have until November the 27th. It is so important that even if it's just one person, for physical damage, a person that may have not been able to register during the time of the damage, that they know that they have until the 27th to register is so important. If they can't get to the BRC to register, we'll be more than glad to assist them through our customer service portal, sba.gov. Additionally, myself, Gabe, and my colleagues, Gabe will be your point of contact. We'll be glad to assist anyone who needs to just reach out to us and just need to navigate through the portal. The last thing that I wanted to let you guys know is that we still have idle running, so even when we're outside of the grace period on the 27th, effective April the 6th, people who are small business owners can still apply. So that's pretty much all I have for you guys. I didn't want to hold you too much. Gabe, would you like to say anything else?
Thank you, LaMonica.
Very welcome, and thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Mayor, I did it again. Mayor, I apologize. Mayor, council members. I mean, really to all the wonderful people that I've had the pleasure of working with here in Curville, those that are present and those that are not. I just want to share that this might be one of my last council meetings. Again, we are wrapping up operations, so as of close of business tomorrow, the location down the street will be shutting down. And so will the one in San Angelo as well. So as LaMonica stated, the 27th is the deadline still for physical damage applications. And after the 27th, for those that are in the business sector that still want to apply for economic injury, they can do so, but everything will now go into either online or through the 800 number. But that aside, again, I just wanted to say thank you. It's been a pleasure. I certainly will still be around. We'll still be working with Kelly, with Todd, and seeing what we can do with the long-term recovery center. But for all intents and purposes, if I don't get to speak in front of you all again, I just wish the community at large the best, and I know that. They will continue to show the resilience that they've shown since day one that I've been on the ground. So thank you again for having me. Thank you again for being so gracious in accepting SBA as part of the fabric of the rebuilding. And I will be around. We still have, again, five other counties in the near vicinity that actually have declaration ongoing. So while I'll be over there, I will still be physically here with our team. And I'm more than happy to come back, talk to you, answer any questions, any concerns, any of the community members that also may still need to just talk to somebody. By all means, I will make myself available. But I just want to leave with that, saying thank you again for your hospitality and actions.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for being here.
Yes, thank you for all your help.
Thank you.
George Broody?
Mr. Broody.
George Broody, 1616 Glen Road. So since you did the finance first, I'll make one comment on it. I noticed, unless I missed it in a prior meeting, you're still running with a unbalanced. You still haven't adopted a balanced budget for the year that we're currently in, since you haven't seen that amendment that was supposed to come. But that was really a side light bonus. So why do citizens come to speak, visitors forum in particular? Well, some come to just ask questions. Some come to praise or thank you for a job well done. Some are providing input and feedback, and still others are coming to hold leaders accountable. But all are coming to engage in a process, right? But all are coming to engage in a process, right? So, when, when the leaders express or display sort of the contempt for dissenting speakers, it has sort of a negative chilling effect on the, the process. And I'm speaking in particular to comment, you made a couple of, a mayor made a couple of meetings ago, you know, bad day, maybe, you know, whatever. But you've repeated it before, you said you were annoyed when citizens who are unqualified, your word, to practice law, give you legal advice. Well, I'm here to tell you, I can't speak for anybody else. I don't come in here when I refer to the law, giving you legal advice, I'm coming in here as a citizen, defending my rights under the law. Those laws are just the covenant between the leaders and the citizens. So, if we can't come to you to appeal to those overreaches, where are we supposed to go? And so, and I'm clearly qualified to defend myself, which is what I do. Again, I can't speak for any of the other people that are doing it, but it, it might go, well, this room has actually progressively become less of a safe place for dissenting views, not just in your time, but in the, in the prior mayor's time, actually. And you all have control over that, you can set the tone, and if you encourage the tone where it's unsafe to dissent, or even just to debate, it kind of conflicts with the other view that comes out of this place, which is, why don't the citizens engage in the process? Well, because when they engage in the process, they get pushed aside, unless they're coincidentally saying the same things that you want them to say. So, if you could, maybe, search inside, maybe, maybe there's some ounce of reflective truth to this, and you might aspire to do better. Thank you.
George Eichner?
Mr. Eichner.
Good evening, I'm George Eiger, six oh four Cardinal Drive, and I represent the Curville Crystal Sliding Corporation. And just for a quick recap, we are volunteer group, we have no overhead, no staff, no NADA, but we just raised money to, raised money to decorate the holidays in, in the greater Curville area. And I want to thank Crystal for giving us top billing on what's happening this weekend. She mentioned the courthouse lighting ceremony first, and that's what I wanted to point out tonight, that approximately seven-thirty after the parade is over, the KCLC has expanded the Christmas lighting ceremony, we, we're starting this year at five o'clock before the parade. We have sixteen vendors that are selling all manner of things that you just cannot resist, and we have three food trucks, and the highlight of this year is we have a heated, lighted porta potty, a trailer that, one of, one of the biggest comments we've had in the past is there's no restroom for kids, and so, it's, it's a, it's a regulation trailer with restrooms in it, that's, that's really great. We have Santa Claus, we, the, the Tybee High School show choir's going to be there, Salvation Army Band's going to be there, it's really going to be a big deal, starts about seven-thirty, will be done in about an hour, but one of the neat things we have is the, the KCLC raised money about over a hundred thousand dollars this year to buy a new Christmas tree, and it's going to be waterproof. Mike Whitler was our, our engineer that tested it out, and he actually put the waters, put the lights underwater and they stayed lit, but they use a cannon plug as, as opposed to the old electrical connection, so, like to invite you all out, thank you, Crystal, for the top billing, and, and God bless you guys for your service.
Thanks, George.
Michaela Taylor?
Ms. Taylor.
On September tenth, I brought a federal lawsuit against the city of Hobbs, New Mexico, to the attention of Mayor Herring and Councilmember Hughes. It's a pretty big deal, Chief Chris McCall was at the losing end of a one-point-four-million-dollar settlement there, and this was two months ago, and that's the last I've heard about it from the city, I haven't heard anything else from the city about this. Let me paint you a different picture. Imagine a city where we aren't afraid that things are being hidden from us, where we know our officials are working for us and not against us, a city where when our mayor says something, we know it'll be that way because our mayor said it. A city where we don't find out about one-point-four-million-dollar civil rights settlements five years after someone like the police chief is hired, where those things come to light immediately, because transparency isn't optional, it's standard. A city where a predator with a badge doesn't show up with bad intentions, and doesn't get passed to the next county where he can do it again. A city where we can go to bed at night without wondering if we'll get an alert when the river floods, where our emergency systems work, where when the worst happens, a once-in-a-ten-thousand-year flood, we can say with pride, everybody survives. Where are these principles? What happened? Where did we get lost? I'll tell you what, part of what happened, and that's the indemnity clause. When our city officials and police officers make mistakes, even terrible ones that cause lives or violate civil rights, they don't pay for it, the city does, which means we do, our tax dollars, our insurance premiums, our wallets, there's no personal accountability, no skin in the game. When you can act without consequences, when the taxpayers cover your settlements, when you can just move on to the next county and do it again, why would behavior change? We need to demand accountability for our leaders and elected officials, real accountability, not we'll look into it accountability, not that's in the past accountability, accountability that means background checks that actually matter, transparency about past settlements and lawsuits, consequences for officials who hide information, a system where I don't know isn't good enough when lives are at stake, where hurting residents don't hear the words, "We are not raising taxes," only to see the tax rate go almost to the max. And I believe we can find our way back, not through hate, not through division, but by getting real and being real with each other, and by demanding that our leaders do the same. I don't have an, an ounce of hate in my heart for a single person in this room or this town, not one, I love everyone here, but I also love something bigger than any individual. I have love for the truth, and the ones who never get to stand up and tell it. Justice isn't about punishment, it's about making sure that what happened to my family, what happened on the fourth, and what's been happening in the shadows does not keep happening. It's about building something better together. That Curville is possible. Not someday, we have everything we need, the people, the heart, and we have the love for this community, I believe that for everybody in this room. I think I'm out of time.
Thank you.
I'm asking the city council to refine the indemnity ordinance number seventy-eight thirty-two, adding refusal to indemnify matching the state of Texas indemnity, and not the nineteen-seventy-eight version, that's why I'm here.
Thank you. Who's next?
That is the end of the citizen speakers.
All right, the next item is a consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda can be approved by one vote, unless a council member, staff member, or member of the public requests a separate consideration of an item, whether you might like something removed from the consent agenda. Is there a motion then?
I'll make the motion to approve items four A through four I on the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion's been made in segment, all those in favor, so vote. It passes unanimously. Item five A is an ordinance, would you please read that into the record?
Ordinance number twenty-two-five dash twenty-two, an ordinance deleting Article Two Sidewalk Cafes, chapter thirty of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Curville, Texas, and moving these provisions to chapter ninety, Streets, Sidewalks, and Other Public Places of Said Code, creating a new Division Two of Article Two within chapter ninety, said division titled Sidewalk Amenities in Downtown Core, which comprises regulations regarding the use and encroachment of amenities onto sidewalks within the city's downtown core, providing for a penalty for violation of any provision hereof, providing for an effective date, and providing other matters related to the subject. We do have three citizen speakers signed up.
Thank you, we'll start with Mr. Paxton.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one second, get my presentation up. Right? Again, this is change to the sidewalk cafes, permit to the sidewalk amenities in the downtown core. This is one of our Curville twenty-fifty items to ensure that streetscape plan accommodates outdoor patio and dining in the right-of-way where feasible. Just a couple of examples of what we have currently downtown. The current ordinance is a annual permit, is limited to tables and chairs only, the current fee is fifty dollars per table, we do require a site plan or a layout to be reviewed by staff, and a certificate of insurance is required. What we're proposing is a one-time permit with a fifty-dollar fee, includes all sidewalk amenities, potted plants, signs, tables and chairs, umbrellas, display racks, et cetera, no site plan requirement, a minimum of five-foot clearance path for ADA up and down the sidewalk. There is still the insurance requirement, and recommending effective date of January first, so we can get time to work with our downtown businesses to get the permits in With that, I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Any questions? We have citizen speakers.
Mayor, council, real quick, just to add on something, if that's okay, Drew? We did do some of our due diligence, addressing some of the concerns, one of that, you know, being the insurance, which I think some speakers may speak on it, we reached out to a local agent that does hold some of the liability insurance of some of the downtown folks, and the, the quote that she kind of gave back on us was about thirty dollars a year in addition if they already hold liability insurance. So, wanted to point the, show that research.
Any questions for any staff member, then? Who's our first speaker?
Joe Martin.
Mr. Martin.
Good evening, I'm Joe Martin, I represent Turtle Creek Olive and Vine, who has a tasting room downtown. The, almost first reading the ordinance was September twenty-third this year, I had three major concerns with it in between September and now, I met with Drew Paxton, Dalton, several other folks, and my three main concerns have been addressed. My client has awnings that used to be there, they took them down, they have to be replaced. As the ordinance was written, that would have been prohibited. The ordinance has been changed to allow an awning to come back, and we can put our logo on it, that was also prohibited. So, that's been changed, and the other one, there was the requirement for, to add the city as an additional insured was clarified, and my client is satisfied with that, so we are in support of the ordinance as, as written. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next?
Bill Rector.
Dr. Rector.
You want to do it first?
Actually, I'm calling on Dr. Rector, he'll go first.
I can't substitute him.
No, you can't.
Bill Rector, seven oh five Water Street. Thank you, council. We, downtown Curville, have been part of an experiment. Five years ago, our city manager, EA Hoppy, voluntarily withdrew from consideration the ordinance that you have before you tonight. Therefore, downtown has been an experiment to see what would happen without government interference, or to put it more softly, government requirements. What we see today is a robust, vibrant, exciting downtown, with increased activity, not only during the day, but also during the evening. We have no vacancies, exciting new businesses are appearing, and there is a waiting list for future vacancies. We see attractive shops inviting restaurants and bars, and a friendly and safe atmosphere inviting strolling and exploration. We also see attractive sidewalks, benches, chairs, vases, and plants. We also see sidewalks that are safe and satisfy ADRA requirements. Yes, during these past five years, there have been accidents, and even lawsuits, but not a single one of these incidents has been due to a sidewalk amenity, but rather due to sidewalk imperfections over which the adjacent businesses are powerless. Yet, we are now being required to assume a cost and even a liability over which we have no ability to correct or to control. Ordinances are usually enacted to correct a problem. This is an ordinance which is being enacted to perhaps create a problem, or to say it another way, to fix something that is not broken. A paperwork burden for both the city and the businesses, at least they have not been necessary in the past five years, which has seen downtown flourish as never before. At our last HDBA meeting, every member supported this ordinance, and the ability and even the necessity to have sidewalk amenities present. Single member voiced concern over was the requirement to name the city of Curville as also insured. There was concern about exposing each business to liability over which they were powerless to correct or rectify. Each business already insures themselves for the liability that may result from the amenities that they have placed in front of their businesses on the sidewalks. They make sure that they do not become a hazard, because they realize that is their responsibility. We realize that you alone have the power over the continued success of downtown. We have elected each of you to that responsibility, and you have always wielded it wisely. We would ask now that if you pass this ordinance with the requirement to also name the city as insured, that you would also request a study in six months by the Main Street Advisory Board to study the economic impact that this ordinance has had upon downtown and upon its businesses. Thank you.
Howard Taylor?
Mr. Taylor.
Thank you.
As I will take more time to my testimony chair.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, Howard Taylor, a joyful, happy citizen of Curville, relatively new. I keep saying that, but it's been a few years, I currently chair the Main Street Advisory Board, and the discussion about the sidewalk ordinance came before us, we talked about it at length. As you can imagine, individuals had individual ideas, sometimes based on their business concerns, but overall, I think there was a sense that this is a very wise ordinance, and communities need to govern public right-of-way and ensure aesthetics and other concerns. There was just one issue that came up that was brought before the committee, and in the minutes of that meeting, it stated there, the motion was made and passed unanimously, that the city not be named on the insurance as second insured, and so I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you.
Who's next?
That's the end of the citizen speakers.
All right, so, after revision, it seems like most people are comfortable with everything except a fifteen-dollar-per-year additionally-named insurance.
Thirty.
Wow. Dollar a month.
And, and Mayor, council, I will say this, as we go through this, just like anything else, if we start getting some feedback that, hey, the insurance is higher, you know, or whatever, we can definitely readdress this and look at it, and, you know, and take some corrective actions if, if we need to, but based off of our research that we've done from an agent that has businesses currently within the downtown, it was about thirty dollars per year.
I don't really hear a complaint about the cost, it's about assuming liability, and I'm not sure a liability's being assumed just because of, just insured.
Councilmember, it's, it's not. What, what that provision is intended to do is if someone is injured by an amenity, presumably, the person who's put the amenity out is going to get sued, and the city's going to get sued, and then, put it in very simple terms- whoever's insured them and hired attorneys to say, hey, they've got an, we've got an indemnity provision, you need to represent our interests, and we ought to be out pretty quick. And that, and that's just it.
If it's a crack in the sidewalk, that somebody tripped and got hurt, that's our insurance.
Yes, sir.
It's not, so we're just the, to get, be an additional insured is really just to, yeah, to protect us on our behalf, and we'll be covered on our own for our own people, defects.
Yes.
So, it's not, they're not assuming any extra liability.
No. Any other comment, question? Do you have something? Elaine?
Well, you know, this, these minutes, I'm not sure they're correct, because I did not vote for this, and it says in here that I did. And I'm looking, because one of the meetings I missed because of the tree meeting that we had, could it be that I wasn't at this meeting? I'm just saying, it's the first time I think I'm seeing these minutes or this piece of paper, and I just want to correct, I didn't, I wouldn't have voted for it. So, if I was one of the ones that was not the majority, then it should be stated in here, just, because I've been supporting the certificate of insurance.
Elaine, I didn't sue myself, I just got back from town, you know.
Right.
As a matter of fact, and I haven't signed it yet either.
So, I think we'll check that. It was at the meeting where you were in attendance, but, I don't know who was, I don't know who the vote count was.
Well, I know I missed an important meeting, I didn't miss the workshop, and I know in the workshop, we didn't talk about this as far as a vote. We were talking about our future plans.
No, it was at the board meeting.
I think that's the one I was at, another meeting.
Oh, that's very true, yes, absolutely.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment. Our business came to the city many, many times over the last thirty-two years, requesting use of your property for an event that, that, that we were putting off for our business, okay? And we always had to list the city of Kerrville as an additional insured. And what that meant to us was that if we were, if we had our food trailer out there, and somebody got sick, they couldn't sue the city because it happened on their property. You were additionally insured on our policy. And I probably got twenty or thirty certificates of insurance over the last thirty years, listing the city of Kerrville as an additional insured on my policy. Not one time was I ever charged for that. It may have cost me, in my original liability policy, maybe twenty, thirty dollars a year, but it was the easiest, and what I encompassed when I read this, this ordinance, was that if somebody sat, if somebody had tables and chairs sitting outside, and somebody sat down on one of those chairs, and that chair fell to the ground, it broke, that person could sue not only the owner who, of the chair, but the owner of the sidewalk. And that's the purpose for being listed as an additional insured on that policy. And it is the cost of doing business, and so I don't think that it is as, as big, as big a deal as everybody's making it out to be. I agree. After all the people I've talked with as well.
I agree with, everything has been said. You know, everybody can sue everybody for anything.
Exactly.
You know, if a umbrella fell over and hit somebody on the sidewalk, then they could try to sue everybody. So, it's, it's just a right for us to protect ourselves. You know, that's, I made the statement earlier to Council, you know, this is a business meeting, that's what we're here to do, and this is city business. I agree with what you said.
Any other discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion, ordinance number 2025-22.
I move to approve ordinance number 2025-22 on first reading.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, so vote, and it passes unanimously. Thank you for working with the city on revisions. We appreciate it.
I would take the city too. My experience has been great. City worked with me, addressed the concerns, and it was an experience.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
True, and everybody, appreciate it.
Item 5B, ordinance number 2025-25, would you mind reading that into the record?
Yes, sir. Ordinance number 2025-25, an ordinance dissolving the city senior services advisory committee by deleting section 291, senior services advisory committee of chapter two administration, article four, boards and commissions of the code of ordinances of the city of Kerrville, Texas, and repealing the ordinances which created and amended the committee. We do not have any citizen speakers sign up.
Thank you. Ms. Meizmer.
Yes, sir. I do, I have a PowerPoint, but I sent that to y'all and put it at your desks. I have a few comments to make, and if y'all have any questions, I'm happy to answer those. The senior services advisory committee was established by ordinance in 2018. In 2020, membership was reduced from sixteen to fourteen members, and in 2021, from fourteen to nine members, both due to not being able to meet because of quorum issues. In 2024, council changed the meeting frequency from monthly to quarterly, again due to quorum issues. A few months ago, the Boomers and Beyond Alliance separated from the Kerrville Area Chamber of Commerce and became part of the Deedirt Center. The Deedirt Center created the Senior Business Connections of the Hill Country, SBC is what I've called them. In October 2025, the senior services advisory committee voted unanimously to dissolve the SSAC. The members believe that the committee's functions are better suited to fall under the SBC at the Deedirt Center. Brenda Thompson attended our senior services meeting in October and welcomed the integration of the senior services advisory committee with the Deedirt, with the SBC. She said combining the two groups would create a larger, more impactful organization dedicated to the ser, to service of the senior community. Karen, I'm sorry, Brenda Thompson is here today in support of this and is prepared to make us speak to you. And Karen Maddox, who is the chair of the SSAC, is also here in support of this and ready to speak on behalf of this as well. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those, or you could ask Brenda or Karen something.
Any questions for Ms. Meizmer? Any questions for either Karen or Brenda? Would you care to speak? Haven't seen you since Saturday.
Everywhere.
Kind of, sort of, yeah. I'm real excited with Deedirt Center to come in and help our formerly known as Boomers and Beyond Alliance to the senior business connections of the hill country. And by coming under the auspices of the Deedirt Center, we can use our 501(c)(3) to be able to raise funds to help with this particular program and get the information out for other organizations, and it's open for any organization that works with seniors to come to a meeting once a month, and just really for us to network and make sure that we're able to provide services for all the seniors in our community.
Makes a lot of sense. I mean, that's what you do.
Anybody else? You have any questions? Thank you. Thanks for coming Saturday.
Thank you.
Let's hope we can help you.
You betcha, you know, I would, I'll take it all on, so.
That's a good answer.
Ms. Maddox, do you want to speak?
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmembers. I have enjoyed chairing the senior services advisory committee for the last year and a half, and I do believe that the integration with the SBC would be in the best interest of the committee.
Thank you. Thank you, and thank you for serving as chair.
Thank you.
All right, we've heard from Steph and two citizens. Any other comments or questions? Entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve ordinance number 2025-25 on first reading.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, so vote, and it passes unanimously. Item 5C, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I need to recuse myself from this vote, as there could be a possible conflict of interest. I have filed a proper affidavit with the city secretary's office, so I will excuse myself for this.
You'll be able to watch us on TV and come back in after?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. All right, who's going to start us off? Mr. Paxton.
I need to read the ordinances.
Oh, you're correct, sorry.
Ordinance number 2025-26, an ordinance disannexing from the city limits land being approximately seventy-nine point four acres, addressed as 1200 Shepherd Rees Road, out of the Horace Yeeman Survey number 575, abstract number 378, the Horace Yeeman Survey number 576, abstract number 377, and the Mymo Wilson Survey number 1471, abstract number 814. The land generally located adjacent to and between Thompson Drive, Spur 98, and Shepherd Rees Road, amending the boundaries of the city to exclude the land, directing the city to notify the Texas Comptroller of the change in boundaries, authorizing a refund of taxes and fees upon disannexation as required by law, and providing for findings of fact, repealer, severability, effective date, property notice, and providing other matters relating to the subject. We do not have any citizen speakers sign up.
Thanks for keeping me in line, I appreciate it. I even had a big note, which you may want. Mr. Paxton.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance to disannex seventy-nine point four acres out of, out of the city limits. Here's a larger view for context, this is off of Thompson Drive. It is addressed to Shepherd Rees because the access goes through their other property, or the owners of their property, but it does front along Thompson, Thompson Drive. Here's the survey, and you'll notice that they're actually leaving a small portion of the frontage along Thompson. That irregular line that you see there is based off of the elevation of the property. The city's current water infrastructure can serve up to that elevation without additional water towers or booster pumps. So, they are requesting annex from that, basically that service line, or service elevation back on the property, because they'll plan to serve it from the separate water system that the property owners and developers own. This is currently not in our CCN, but as that frontage property develops, they could add that to our CCN, and that would be consistent with the comprehensive plan and the future land use plan for mixed use along the frontage of Thompson Drive, and actually estate lots to the, the upper hills of this area of town, because of the water pressure issues. And then, here's a map showing the topography. From Thompson Drive to the top of the hill is almost three hundred feet of elevation, and from Thompson Drive to the extent of our elevation where we can easily serve water, is roughly about eighty feet of that, so. Be pleased to answer any questions. And Mr. McCray is here, the property owner, if you have any questions.
Any questions?
Well, Dalton and I in our regular weekly meeting did discuss the refund of taxes and fees, but wouldn't the services that have been provided up to date be more than, that require no need to refund?
I believe so. I didn't get a chance to meet with Julie, but I believe so. It would basically be a wash of the services.
All right, that's what I was just clarifying.
Yes.
The refund, taxes are always back, how far? Or, year?
Well, the, the services that have been offered through the city, through being inside the city limits, would be a wash based on the taxes that have been paid, so there wouldn't actually be any refund.
Okay. Getting that.
And I'll, I'll verify that with Julie before second reading.
All right. Any other comments or questions? I frequently drive by that property on my way home, I'm nice to know who owns it. Always look at the roads going up. All right, any other comments or questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve ordinance number 2025-26. I'll second. Go ahead, Kent.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, so vote, and it passes unanimously. Thank you for being here. We look forward to seeing what you do with the property, as I drive by several times a week.
Thank you.
All right, item number 6A, resolution number 342025, Mr. Paxton.
This is a resolution to amend this, the fee schedule for the sidewalk amenity ordinance. Again, this will be effective January first, and we are recommending a fifty-dollar fee for the one-time permit.
Any questions? Do we have any citizen speakers?
Yes, sir.
All right, any comments or questions? Or a motion, then?
I'll make a motion that we approve resolution number 34-2025.
Oh, I was almost going to get Kent to say it.
I missed the last one.
It was a little faster on.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor, so vote, and it passes unanimously. I mean, Kent, you didn't vote, right?
Yes.
Items 6B, resolution number 352025, Ms. Rodriguez?
Hello?
Mr. Hornet?
I am, I am, okay. I am going to take her place for tonight, to go over this. So, Senate Bill 1173 passed this, this latest session, which changed the competitive procurement process for local government purchasing for items. Previously, that amount was fifty thousand dollars, and that amount has now increased to a hundred thousand dollars. The original submission of the bill had it up to two hundred thousand dollars, and I think it was the House that pushed that back down. So, the last time that this was changed was in 2007, and so, 2007, fifty thousand dollars to today is roughly eighty thousand dollars, if you're conservative on the CPI changes. And so, the, the state agreed that a lot of the cities were, we were, a lot of cities were, were asking for this flexibility. It, it gives, it gives us the ability to better negotiate for cost of goods and services in certain circumstances, right? We don't have to do competitive sealed bids, it gives ourselves the flexibility. What the agenda item's also requesting is that the city manager's purchasing authority, which is now currently at fifty thousand dollars, also be changed in our purchasing policy to allow for up to one hundred thousand dollars as well. It's been a, you know, that's fifty thousand dollars, I say, hey, it's weird saying it. Everything I say sometimes has weird, you know, a house costs three hundred thousand dollars, and that's affordable, that sounds weird. Fifty thousand dollars is not a lot of money, that's, but in a, from a government procurement standpoint, a lot of things rise to the hundred thousand dollar level pretty fast around here.
Right, yes, they do.
Yeah.
Yep.
But with that, I'll turn it over for any questions if y'all have.
Any questions or comments? We have one citizen speaker.
Yes, sir. George Buridi?
Mr. Buridi.
George Buridi, still at 1616 Glen Road. Oh, yeah, I had to remind myself, I don't know what they're doing with the microphones, but those still don't come out amplified, so, I'm just saying.
His did.
But anyways. So, the first thing is, you know, why do we have a competitive bid process? It's not to be more or less efficient, it's generally speaking, to, it's sort of part of that transparency thing, and to put a little bit more onus on the bidding process to create that market value of whatever the service is, hence the word competitive, right? So, the, a couple of questions, though. In the law, it's not requiring you to raise it, it's just giving you the authority to raise it, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so that's one. The other is, in the past year or so, how many bids have we had to create that were in the fifty to hundred thousand dollar range?
I don't have it off the top of my head, but we did, oh, gosh, public safety facility, it's forty-five million dollar project that had quite a bit in there.
But what I'm asking is, how many, how, how many are in between fifty and a hundred thousand? So, do we, are we actually, a city like us, I'm guessing we don't have as many bids So do we, are we actually, a city like us, I'm guessing we don't have as many bids going out that are for projects in this range? Is that not correct?
No, I think we would. I think we have a lot of those items. I think we have pumps, I think we have any number,
Big projects.
Any number of utilities, well, no, any number of utility replacement items that are going to be anywhere from twenty-five to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, some of which will need us to go through the sealed bid process. I mean, this gives us the opportunity to avail ourselves to it. It's, it also isn't to suggest that we would do this every time, you know, that, okay, we have one bid.
But I just wanted to ask the question.
Go ahead.
So, for, rather speaking, and, you know, they got me on the clock, right?
Sorry.
And then so, no, I asked them for the answer, that was good. But anyways. And then, so, the, the cost of creating a bid, there's a time, I, I get that, but the cost of creating a bid above and beyond what we're already doing, you still have to spec out a project, whether you're getting a bid or not, so it's, it's not as enormous as you would think. But I'm less concerned about the competitive bid part of this, this ask. The one, and it's no offense to Dalton, but there's really not a connection between the bid process not being necessary and authorizing the city manager to make expenditures with a higher number without even coming to you all. I'm not sure that you get much benefit, plus the added, I mean, the only inconvenience is that you can't do it in a day. But you have a meeting every couple of weeks, it's really not that big of a problem to get something on the agenda, just to let you know, which also lets the public know, of expenditures that arguably aren't as routine as you would think. And it doesn't hurt anything to leave it, leave that part of it at the same number, just so that there's a lot more transparency and public knowledge of what's going on. Because, like you said, the, the legislature is trying to bump this up, and if you just try and keep in track with that, you've bumped it up to two hundred thousand, that's, that's a pretty big number to just have things going through without ever having our elected officials at least see it. You know, just put it on an agenda. You guys put, you put all these finance things in your consent agenda. It's not like it takes much time off the table. So, I would suggest pulling that part out. And if you're going to do anything, do the, do the bid thing, but that's just me. Thanks.
Thank you. Any, any other speakers?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, Michael.
Mr. Mayor, I would comment by saying that in, in a, in a state where the vast majority of the state legislature tries to limit what you as a city can do, they looked at this issue and said, no, we're going to raise the city's ability to, to address these items. I mean, it's contrary to just about everything that we see filed as a bill from the state of Texas about a city a lot of times. They, they do restrict what you can do. This is the opposite of that, so I respectfully disagree with both the speaker.
Any comments or questions for staff? Their motion then on resolution thirty-five, twenty-twenty-five.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number thirty-five dash twenty-twenty-five.
Second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, so vote. And it passes unanimously. All right, six C, is resolution number thirty-seven, twenty-twenty-five. Michael Henn?
Yes, this was for the Kerr Central Appraisal District. And last time, you went ahead and nominated a person, and now they received all the nominations. They brought the nominations back to each entity, and so now you have your candidates.
So if I understand correctly, it's, it would be, it would be beneficial for us to vote all of our votes for our nominee, save one vote each for the other nominees. Is that correct?
Well, if you do not cast one vote for each person at least, then you do not get to re-vote again in case they have to vote.
So, if my math is correct, and I'm sure someone will check, we would vote eight hundred and sixty-seven votes for Pete Calderon. Then one vote each for Amy Glider, Rick Bowles, Jack Birch, David Garrison, Wesley Holycamp, Larry Creo, and Rolinda Schmidt. Does that sound about right?
Yeah.
All right, so I'm going to, I'm going to go, since I did the math, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that we vote as outlined in my.
Are we supposed to write it on our?
Yes, I'll write it on the resolution. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Second, we have a motion and second. Any discussion?
All in favor, so vote. And it passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item is an interlocal agreement between the Kerrville Public Utility Board, Kerr County, the City of Kerrville, the City of Ingram, and the Upper Guadalupe River Authority. Who's going to start, Paulie?
I will do the starting, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
But I won't finish, and here's part of the reason why, is that one of the, one of the nice things that, nice things, one of the processes that came out of the flood is that we rapidly knew, we knew, we knew very quickly we didn't have enough bandwidth to handle all the things coming our way. And so, through some charitable donations, KEDC has been able to work with a few folks. Mr. William Whitson here, and Ms. Kim Fouts have both been kind of put on staff from KEDC, and helping us navigate some of these grant opportunities and helping us deal with these long-term recovery groups. Why are we here tonight? William is going to talk you through a little bit of this K-Pub application for this missing middle mile broadband application process. And I'm glad he's here to do it, because I don't know what I'm talking about.
Do you have one citizen speaker?
Thank you. William.
Thank you, Jonathan, or Michael, and Mayor and Council. Glad to be here, William Whitson with the Long-Term Recovery Operation, and my partner, Kim. We're wanting to talk to you about the first grant out of the, out of the hole in our recovery process. One of the most important things we can do as a community out of this recovery is to make sure that we develop a warning system that is faster, that has better predictive capabilities, that's flexibility to serve the affected communities. And what this middle mile grant basically is, building an electronic highway to move information quicker, so that we can predict the, the brewing circumstances and get it out to the emergency community to warn the public. The middle mile grant is run by the State Comptroller's Office. It's a Texas state grant. It's somewhere around fifteen million, we're still shuffling numbers, but that's what the ask will be. And I'd also like to recognize Eric Anderson here with the Lower Collar River Authority. What an amazing partner they have been in this process. We're actually taking a highway that they have partially up, and we're enhancing it to make sure that we can move data and information from remote areas in Kerr County and Kendall County into this predictive model. The application is due November twenty, so we're moving fast. And it basically feeds the rain gauge data, stream flow data, weather data, all kinds of data into a, a predictive software that is being developed by the Upper Guadalupe River Authority. And it's being designed by Kissers of North America. And they actually started this work a month before the flood. So we are basically picking that process up and moving it forward. And we're really glad that these partners have come together. And I, I'll have to compliment your staff, the staff of K-Pub, all our partners, we pull together very rapidly. And the grant application now is over sixty pages. And we're, we're going to make the deadline with your help. Like I said, the data collection is from multiple sources. We're even working with Texas Department of Transportation. They have rain gauges that are below their bridges, about six inches, that tripwire, you know, any flood waters that would come up, and we want to try to include them in this effort as well. We, of course, there's another bucket of money, this is just the first bucket of money, that is dedicated to this effort. The second is from the Texas Water Development Board. And they, they're being a little slow in terms of offering the funds, but we're going to be talking with them about that, the timing of it. And so, basically, this one's ready, it's available now, so we're going to apply and push that envelope, and then swing around and talk to the second part that we need to finish out, the process and the system. We think that if the funds have come in, as we believe they may be, if they're awarded quickly by the, the Texas Comptroller's Office, that we'll be able to get moving quickly on this part of the system. This is a drawing that basically shows you what graphically, what I just stated, where the, the data is out in the hinterlands of, of the county, in the hills and the areas that are feeding these streams, and it's flowing on into this electronic highway, if you will, that then flows into the predictive model, and then, of course, would be used by emergency management as we move out and warn the public. So it's a complicated process, but it's one we've been able to jump in and figure out quickly. And this grant is the first step in getting that pulled together. This is kind of a representative map. And again, the folks at, at UGRA have been amazing. They're going to be adding rain gauges and stream flow gauges to enhance and augment the network they already had in place. So this grant would have us, I guess, beef up the system, if you will. And the more data we have, the easier it is to predict, predict the outcome. So what does this interlocal agreement does? It basically says that K-Pub is the lead applicant, and that they basically had a grant administrator and a team in place to work with, so that was great. We took advantage of your existing processes. Like I said, L-CRA has been amazing. They have provided, they've been doing this kind of thing over thirty years. So when we ask them, well, how much does this cost? Like, oh, that's what it costs. How much does this cost? Well, we know that, too. And they have all these inter-agency agreements, they have towers that already have pre-negotiated leases and rates that are familiar with the FCC and all the players that are involved in this type of transaction. So we've been able to put together very quickly with your help and your team's help, the City of Kerrville, City of Ingram, they signed it last night, Kerr County, they are on board, UGRA. And we've even got Hill Country Telephone on, on board as well as part of this effort, because it's kind of a combining of the efforts and systems that are out there to move data. Again, we have covered the maintenance and operations. Again, this is only related to you, to the parts that are under your control. K-Pub and L-CRA are the main owners of the network. It's a combination of fiber, microwave, and LTE communications that's going to be covered by the grant. And UGRA, their main element is the modeling software that takes all this information and says, hey, we've got a problem brewing over here, you need to get the word out faster. The, the current system reads data on increments of about a half, about a half hour, and this moves it down to about five minutes. So that way, the, the data's coming in quicker, the model can predict the outcome quicker, the information can move out quicker to the public. We'll be back. This is just our first request. Our team is working hard. We're going to be working with UGRA as the lead applicant as well. The interlocal agreement is, you know, there's another agreement that we're going to be back talking to you about officially establishing the Long-Term Recovery Operation under the Texas Government Code, and all those kinds of formal documents. And of course, we have all kinds of grants, planning initiatives, and things we want to do to help you come back better from this disaster. And that's what we're here to do, and, and help your staff. And again, they've been amazing. Be glad to have, answer any questions if I could.
Any comments or questions? Do we have a citizen speaker?
Yes, Bill Rector.
Mr. Rector, Dr. Rector, excuse me.
Bill Rector, seven oh five Water Street, representing UGRA. Any, came here just for any questions. We appreciate your support of this interlocal agreement.
Thank you. All right, any questions for staff or the consultant?
A general question. So, the data will be faster. How about the communication part?
Glad you asked that question. We have a intergovernmental committee that is working with our efforts. And I think your, is it your fire chief or your police chief? It's the lead of that, fire chief. And he's working with all of his counterparts, and we are working out a standard protocol, so that when this information comes in and, you know, we get a hit, not, but I mean, if, if the conditions develop and we see that there's a problem coming, there would be a standard protocol to move that information out into the system and alert the public faster and better than it was this last event.
Any other comments or questions?
Several.
Go ahead, please.
Yes, thank you, but please bear with me, because I have several questions.
Yes, sir.
About all of this. And K-Pub, City of Ingram, UGRA, L-CRA, City of Kerrville, Kerr County, and HCTC. During the whole process, when we were in meetings with state officials, the state officials kept saying, we are going to put money in this, we are going to do this. Have we have any input from, and I'll just throw it out there, the governor's office, because that is the one that was saying that they were going to do something?
We have had communications with them, and with the Comptroller's Office, and this was step number one. The second step is what you're referring to, and that was what I meant earlier by my comment, that we need to have some further discussions with them. What happened was the Senate moved the appropriation to the governor's office, and the governor's office moved it to the Texas Water Development Board. And so, that's where the funding is, and so their process seems a bit slower than we would like. But again, it's, we're early on, and it's, you know, be happy to draft letters and, you know, have communications so that we can speed this up, because if we can get the data fed into the network, then the next thing is, okay, what about all the other moving parts, the sirens, the lights, you know, the other things that come with the system to alert the public? And that's the part that we would like to see more aggressive funding for.
I just, me personally, I don't want to see it fall through the cracks, because it sounds like they're moving money from one place to another place to another place, and just kind of pushing it off on other entities. But second one kind of goes more toward Chief and Chief that are here. And, sir, I'm going to include you in this with L-CRA, because our sheriff's office, who sends out the code reds whenever we have everything, they don't operate off the L-CRA towers. They operate with Motorola, and this is where I want to ask you all, is that compatible with what our county law enforcement, who sends out everything, is that compatible with that? Because it came down to L-CRA and Motorola when they did the whole bidding process, and it went to Motorola. So, is that something that's going to work? That's, I mean, it all started out west, and it came this way. And out west is not the City of Kerrville, that's the county, and I just, we have to have something, but I just want to make sure it works, and that we can all be on the same page and get the same information. So, I, I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
No, that's okay. What you're referencing is, is their radio system. This would be a separate standalone system, supporting a warning system. So there, there, there wouldn't be, in my understanding, in this early stage, there wouldn't necessarily be a connection with the radio system that you're referring to. This would be purely used for a dashboard for us to gain information from multiple sources, to be able to then quickly make decisions and make recommendations on, on emergency response to the public.
Thank you, Chief.
Also, remember, also, the, we expect and anticipate in the ninetieth legislation, so in twenty-twenty-seven, that interoperability, which is, I think, what you're referencing to, on the radio system. So there is a state push, they try to tackle it during the special sessions on interoperability. This is more of the overarching broadband and connectivity in the communication side, not on the radio system side.
I just, we just need to make sure everything works together, so we don't, I mean, this was the worst thing that any of us ever experienced, and I don't want to go through it again. We don't need to go through it again, so.
More questions?
No, sir, that was it. Thank you all. Thank you for being here. Thank you, sir.
And I will, sorry, Mayor, if I may?
Please.
I will add, you know, this, because obviously, I think everybody's, you know, looking at this as, as far as time. How long? How long this is taking, what's happening, you know? We're obviously getting ready for, you know, preparing for spring and summer of next year, so what are we doing, right? And we feel like the money's getting tied up. We're dealing with some of the bureaucratic red tape. But I wanna reassure council, and I wanna, you know, let our folks know that Chief McCall, Chief, um, Chief Maloney and our teams, working with UGRA, Tara Bushno and their, we have already implemented short-term stuff that we're continuing to advance. So, very, uh, this was months ago already. We basically took the, the, the MyAlert, which is the USGS Alerting System. We've already tied that into our, our inclement weather teams for, for, um, thresholds. We've gotten the thresholds and worked with UGRA on, on some of the data side, even prior to the data coming out, whatever data's available. And we're starting to work through now, when those thresholds hi- hit, what is our response mechanism? What is our notification, you know, mechanisms? And what can we do within the city limits of Kerrville to already tackle this? So we are looking, and, and I've worked with Tara Bushno on some of the strategic planning side for UGRA itself, on how do we make sure we tackle this? So, we are looking at some of the immediate things that we've done. We've already started implementing some of those immediate efforts, and we're gonna continue to expand on that in the short term while this process is being developed.
Comments, questions? You may recall when I testified on July thirty-first before the committee, the legislative committee, I said I wanted, on one thing, I want a data-driven, automated, warning system, designed and installed before next summer. This is one of the steps to do that. And because the money's already allocated, we don't have to wait for the state government to write the rules on how to, how to spend it. This is a program that was here before the flood. Was told to us by the comptroller's office, "You need to apply for this." We've rewritten the rules for your situation. I think it's, it's vital, a first step. And I just wanted to know, I wanted you, just a sec, Tucker. I wanted you to know that behind the scenes, a great number of people have been working on this, and I'm very thankful they put up with me as I'm pushy and pushy and pushy. Dr. Rector.
Mayor, we, uh, have met that challenge, will meet that challenge. We are adding sixteen new sensors in West Kerr County. That's what's going to be connected with this LTE network that we're talking about tonight. Those will go to the data dashboard, to the predictive area. That will then go to the warning system, and then Chief McCall will, will go ahead and send that word out through cell service or, or whatever means they use. We have dedicated one point one million, one point five million dollars to make this happen. We will install those sensors, both rain gauge and the stream sensors, by June of twenty-six, and we will install at least four sirens for June, before June of twenty-six.
Thank you.
So there will be a system in place.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Mayor, I think the main thing, the Long-Term Recovery Operation wants to assure the public is, it is going to be better than it was in the summer of twenty twenty-five.
Almost anything would be. All right, so, um, we'll need a motion to enter in this interlocal agreement.
I'll move to approve the interlocal agreement.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, so vote. Passes unanimously. I know that y'all have other places to be. Why don't I go ahead and sign that document now? And you can go to your next, wow, next, thank you, sir.
Wait, you don't wanna stick around?
How do you spell Joe Herring?
This is the feel-good part.
I, I have to, like, actively control my, like, pulse, 'cause I was like, "I can do your signature."
I'll be quick, guys. I promise.
Thank you, it was nice to meet you.
Yes, thank you all so much.
Y'all.
Yeah, good night. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Item six E. Memorandum of Understanding. Mr. Brimhall.
All right, Mayor and Council. Good to see you again. Um, I wanted to just really quick, I, I noticed some scouts over here. I'm, I'm an Eagle Scout, and, uh, I imagine you're here for the citizenship and the community merit badge? Excellent. I love seeing this. Like to see it more meetings, but I know that it can get a bit, uh, rough. This is one of the, this is, honestly, I'm glad this is last. This is one of the funner things, uh, I've gotten to present. But we talked a little bit, Mayor and Council, about the Guadalupe Park rebuild earlier today. And, um, it gives me great pride to talk about the partnership that has been formed with the NBA and also with the Hill Country Community Foundation. And, um, each of the NBA teams in Texas will donate a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. And that will be matched by the community foundation to rebuild the park at Guadalupe Park that was lost during the flood. And not just rebuild it, they're gonna make it better. Uh, the, the way that came about is we gave a, a tour to, uh, one of the representatives from the Rockets, and they were very moved. And, um, they rallied and were able to commit that funding. And, uh, it's, it's, it's one of the, the good stories that comes out of the flood. And being new to the community, um, it, it was an honor to be a part of. And I do need to change a little bit in your motion if you want to enter into this MOU. We're not entering into, uh, any contract with the, um, the designer and/or installer today. We're gonna bring that to you at the next meeting. So it'll just be to enter into the MOU. And I'm available for any questions that anybody has.
Guadalupe Park. And this MOU. Eric Nunn, is there a motion?
I would move that we approve, uh, the, uh, execution of a memorandum of understanding. Has.
Is there a second?
Second.
This has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, so vote. And I know you gave us a, a very bold deadline earlier on.
It's a bold deadline. I, I'd love to meet it. Uh, the NBA, uh, they can get a bit pushy with their deadlines. They've got people to make happy, and we wanna help them make those people happy.
Make them happy.
Um, you know, you're gonna write checks that big. We wanna help them out. So, uh, we would like to have this open by April one, twenty twenty-six. So, uh, both for the NBA and for the community, so looking forward to it.
Thank you.
And have them here for the ribbon cutting?
Yeah, yeah, have Wemby out there. He'll just hold the ribbon himself.
By himself.
Thank you. Mr. Brimhall.
Thank you very much.
All right, second amendment to the AC Shriner House Development and Management Agreement. Ms. Meismer.
Oh, Martin, can you bring up that presentation, please? Thank you very much. Okay, let me give you a little bit of history here. Um, January twenty-six, twenty twenty-one, the original development and management agreement between the city and the Heart of the Hills Heritage Center was approved by council. On three twenty-two of twenty twenty-two, the First Amendment to the DMA was approved by council, and that provided a process for dollar-for-dollar reimbursement back to HHHC, Heart of the Hills Heritage Center, for funding commitments they received for the elevator and improvements for compliance with accessibility laws. Exciting stuff. The project is almost complete. Construction is almost complete. We have a few remaining items. I know many members of the audience are excited to know this. Um, exterior paint of the house and the carriage house, the elevator inspection, and then the punch list. Um, we are excited to say we'll enter the management phase of the Development and Management Agreement in January twenty twenty-six and turn the, um, house over to the Heart of the Hills Heritage Center for the museum. Dalton and I met with Angela and Dr. Rector in October to discuss recommended changes. And I'm gonna go through these, uh, I'm gonna summarize each one. Section one point five, um, change the termination notice from two to five years. Section one point six eliminates the use of the carriage house by HHHC due to safety reasons, but they will have access to the garage for storage or whatever they want to use it for. Section two point two, change, uh, the number of directors from at least five, but no more than eleven, to comply with, um, twenty-two point two oh four Texas Business Organization Code regarding number of members. That way they can have however many complies with that. Um, section five point one, instead of having naming rights approved by the city, change to say that, um, they shall remain effective only during HHHC's management of the property. Section five point two, um, H, said, um, change advertising to include logos of either or both the city or the Buttholesworth Memorial Library, or refer to Heart of the Hills Heritage Center as located on the campus of the Buttholesworth Memorial Library. There was a little bit more wording there, and we took that off. Um, Z says, uh, change maintenance reports from monthly to quarterly. And then BB was added to, um, that HHHC was responsible for maintaining the curb appeal of the house and grounds to include the landscaping. And then six point four B was added. Um, HHHC would be in default if voluntarily filing bankruptcy or has filed against it an involuntary petition of bankruptcy. And then six point four, um, oh, that was just changed to C because it was B before. Um, recommended action, staff recommends approval to the Second Amendment of the AC Shriner House Development and Management Agreement. I'm here to answer any questions, and five, or four members of the board, and Angela are here also.
Any questions?
No.
All right, any questions?
We do have one citizen speaker.
Who's that?
Bill Rector.
Dr. Rector.
Wait a minute, his time's up. He's already been up there for downtown and for the, for, uh, the park for what a reason.
Just doesn't matter.
Tell you how much we appreciate working with Dalton and Kid Meismer. They have been very easy to work with, and we appreciate working with them. We have here tonight, uh, our board members, Mayor Herring, Charlie McAvain, Linda Stone, and, uh, our executive director, Angela Kennedy. They may want to address you also, but we support these amendments. Uh, we're going to approve them. Our executive board has already approved them. We will approve them at our meeting tomorrow evening. We appreciate your work on these amendments. Thank you.
All right, is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the Second Amendment to the AC Shriner House Development and Management Agreement.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded.
You can third.
I'll be doing some more later, don't worry.
Are there any? Is there discussion? All in favor, so vote. Thank you. We appreciate your being here tonight.
Thank you.
All right, we have some board appointments. Board appointment to the Building Board of Adjustment and Appeals. Ms. Segler.
I would like to recommend that Caleb Mizell for reappointment, recommend Justin Foster for regular member status, and to appoint Kyle Reeves for the new alternate.
I will second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, so vote. Passes unanimously. Item seven, appointment to the Food Service Advisory Board. Ms. Segler.
There we go. Uh, there were three vacancies that'll occur at the end of November, and three applications have been received. I'd like to recommend Michael Clark for reappointment, Danielle Porte eligible for reappointment, and recommend that she be reappointed, as well as Selena Sheets, and she is new. Uh, I'll be in touch with her to see if there's anything[1743.31]